Good evening. Time being seven o'clock. I call the July 19th, 2023 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements from the chair. All citizens are now welcome to attend public board and committee meetings in person. Meetings are live streamed by Franklin TV and shown on Comcast Channel 11 and Verizon Channel 29. In an effort to maximize citizen engagement, opportunities, citizens will be able to continue to participate remotely via phone, or you may click the Zoom link that is on the posted agenda on the town's website. The phone number is 929-205-6099. And the Zoom ID is 885-6603-9044. Then you need to hit the pound sign. So once again, the Zoom ID, 885-6603-9044, pound. If residents are just interested in watching the meeting, it will also be livestreamed by Franklin TV. Citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during Citizens' Comments. The Town Council will give remarks, appropriate consideration, and may ask the Town Administrator to review the matter. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? I'd be surprised.
It's that time of year again.
It is that time of year.
Nancy D'Amello, Town Clerk. And we have two elections. I'm here to speak on my favorite subject: elections. So, October 24th, we have the tri-county election, and the hours are going to be from 12 to 8. I don't have any of the specifics yet, and as soon as I do, I will be back. The town election, November 7th, from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And again, I'll be here as we get closer to the date. But August 1st, everybody can come and pull their nomination papers, 8:00 a.m. And if you would like, give me a call, and we'll set an appointment. I'll have the papers ready for you, and go over everything, so you're not there long. So, August 1st, pull nomination papers. I need those back by September 6th. And I have all of these dates on the website, and again, posted on my window as well, okay? And so, September 6th, by 5:00, the signed nomination papers must be back, and we'll certify them. September 22nd, by 1:00, is the last day to withdraw your candidacy. And then, October 28th, which is a Saturday, is the last day to register to vote. I will be here from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. If anybody wants to come in to register to vote, please feel free. And that's it. And again, I will be back to discuss who's pulled papers, who's withdrawn, as we get closer to the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, and we look forward to your return engagements. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving forward. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 25th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. I now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 7th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. I now entertain a motion to approve minutes from June 21st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, additions, deletions. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, moving on. The next item on the agenda is Proclamations and Recognizations. We don't have any this evening. They're going to be done a little later on. We'll move on to appointments, and the first appointment is to the Agriculture Commission, Nick Capocchia. And the clerk will read the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are appointments.
Oh, is it?
It's just one, yeah.
It's one sheet. It's actually all.
Okay, all right. So then, let's...
You want to read them all?
Yeah. I'll read all the appointments. The others are Cultural District Committee, Sue Cass and Patrick Conlin; Design Review Commission, Amy Adams, Jim Bartrow; Finance Committee, Lauren Nagel; and Franklin Cultural Council, Carol Fletcher, John Restino, and Gene Wolfe. Clerk will read the appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are appointments. The Town Administrator has recommended appointments as listed below with term expiration dates as listed below. Agricultural Commission, Nick Capocchia, 398 Prospect Street, with the term to expire in 2025. Cultural District Committee, Sue Cass, 146 Long Hill Road, with the term to expire in 2026. Patrick Conlin of 626 Old Farm Road, with the term to expire in 2026. Designer Review Commission, Amy Adams of 56 Jefferson Road, with the term to expire in 2025. James Bartrow, 99 Pine Street, as an associate member, with term to expire in 2026. Finance Committee, Laura Nagel, 5 Nanette Brook Lane, with the term to expire in 2026. Franklin Cultural Council, Carol Fletcher of 67 Bayberry Common, with the term to expire in 2026. John Restino, 29 Washington Street, with the term to expire in 2025. Gene Wolfe of 9 Oak Ridge Drive, with a term to expire in 2025. Motion to ratify the appointments by the Town Administrator as listed above with term expiration dates as listed above also.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Discussion, Jamie?
All great people. They are.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the council? Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just my usual comments. I just really want to thank everybody who stepped up to the plate to volunteer for these positions. It means a lot to the community for people to fill these roles. They're very, very important roles they're taking on, and I want to thank them very much for stepping up to the plate. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Jones. And I'd just like to thank the administration for making all the appointments on one piece of legislation.
I second that.
Third.
Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve the appointments as read by our clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearings, we don't have any this evening. We have one license transaction, a license modification, change of officers, directors, LLC managers, Shaw's Supermarkets, Inc., doing business as Shaw's located at 255 East Central Street. Clerk will read the license modification.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion in a second to waive the reading.
Okay.
All those in favor of wavering the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Make a motion to license modification, change of office director, LLC Shaw's Supermarket, Incorporated, DBA Shaw's located at 255 East Central Street.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through, Mr. Chair, through the council, this is a pretty routine transaction. I know McDermott, Quilty, Milter, representative from them, I think Nick Zazula is on Zoom. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Nick, but we know it's just a change of officers and pretty routine.
No, no, thank you. Just joining you here from Zoom land, as Mr. Chair so aptly put it, happy to answer any questions, but pretty administratively straightforward, so thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Any further questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve the license modification, change of offices, directors, LLC managers, Shaw's Supermarket, doing business as Shaw's located 255 East Central Street. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to presentations and discussions, and we're fortunate this evening to have our legislative delegation, Senator Rebecca Roush and Representative Jeffrey Roy, two folks that are very familiar to us all. So, please, Representative Roy, you want to start off?
Sure, I would be delighted. But you know what? If Senator Roush could do her presentation of the citation first, that would be wonderful. How's that?
Works, that works for me.
If it pleased the chair, thank you very much. It's wonderful, thank you. I am very much looking forward to the presentation with my dear friend and good colleague, Representative Roy, and it is such a joy to be back with all of you in this room for another yearly update. But before we get into those details, I want to take a moment of celebration, celebrate one of Franklin's finest, who recently received, earned, an award from the state, someone who has done a tremendous amount of work and service to the town of Franklin, to the broad breadth of the community here, someone I am very honored and grateful to call not just a colleague in public service, but also a friend. So with that, I wonder, Mr. Chair, if I might call up Kay Kelly.
Please, please do.
Okay, hi. It is my distinct privilege and pleasure to present a citation to Kay. Kay was awarded a 2023 Commonwealth Heroine Award by the Caucus of Women Legislators and the Statewide Commission on the Status of Women. This was a tremendous field this year. The award ceremony took place just a couple of weeks ago at the State House, but we wanted to present Kay with a citation here, right here in her hometown of Franklin, which I will now read. It's a package deal, read the citations. Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Kay Kelly in recognition of your 2023 Commonwealth Heroine Award, celebrating your outstanding contributions to Franklin, including creating the Franklin Cultural Festival and fostering community unity through music, art, and education. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, and it is indeed signed by one of Franklin's former state senators, our Senate President Karen Spilka, our clerk, myself, as the now current senator for the entirety of the town and dated today, July 19th, 2023. Congratulations and thank you for everything you've done."
Fourscore in seven years. I did not prepare...
You're supposed to sing to us.
From the heart, Ken.
You got to pay for that. I got a concert coming up soon. Thank you. I really, this has been an experience of a lifetime. My dad was a huge, my dad was a town councillor, president of the town council, on every committee. I grew up surrounded by parents that did service to the community. We always had Rotary Exchange students living in my home. We were always dragged to events. My dad's no longer around, but I grew up that way, and I'm so pleased. Really, Jeff nudged me, pushed me into the cultural council, and truly, it really has been, at the end of my days, it'll be some of my very best experiences, particularly surviving through a global pandemic and being able to serve the community through arts and culture during that time, because I really, it was necessary, and it was such a privilege to be in that position where I could find safe programming. And Becca and Jeff both came to those things, as well as many of the town councillors. We were able to serve the community and kind of pass a year or two under really difficult circumstances and bring joy to our senior citizens, to the children, to so many community members. So I, it really is truly my privilege. So thank you for putting me in this position, and certainly thank you for the recognition.
Congratulations, Kay and Senator Roush, thank you for doing that presentation here.
It was an honor to nominate her for the award. I was thrilled to get the notice when she got it.
Yeah, great. Representative Roy?
I don't want you to think that the House of Representatives ignored Kay Kelly. We did give her a citation on the day of the event up at the State House, and we had two rock stars from Franklin who were Commonwealth heroines. Dr. Anne Bergen was also recognized, and Kay Kelly, so I can't think of finer people to represent this community for that particular award. So congratulations to the two of them. But, you know, here we're tonight to talk about what's been happening up on Beacon Hill and how what we've been doing up on Beacon Hill impacts the community of Franklin. It's such a privilege and honor to represent the community of Franklin with Senator Roush up at the State House, and I can tell you, we are on speed dial with one another. We meet frequently and talk about what we can do for this community, because we're aware of the stressors that you're undergoing with education funding, particularly special education, stormwater contamination, affordable housing, and rising substance use and mental health issues. And first of all, begin by congratulating you as being able to handle many of those issues professionally and with great service to the community. Did want to provide you with some updates. We are operating currently on an interim budget. That's not something out of the ordinary, but we have a conference committee that is in the process of finalizing that FY24 budget, and I'm hoping that that's going to happen very soon. But some of the things that you can expect, that clearly we anticipate will come out of that budget, the unrestricted government aid contains a 3.2% increase over FY23 funding. That's going to represent just under $3 million for the community of Franklin in unrestricted aid. Both the House and the Senate bill would fund Chapter 70 school aid at $6.5 billion, in line with the Student Opportunity Act. And what that means for Franklin, you are still a community that's in a hold harmless state because you get so much excess aid. The state is not taking that excess aid back from you, but until you reach the point where you can cover that excess, you're going to get the minimum increase, which is $60 per student, and that will result in approximately $29.2 million in Chapter 70 funding for the fiscal year FY24. Special education, I know that we have heard much on this particular topic, and I want to let you know that just last week, the House passed a $693 million supplemental budget for FY23, and that includes $75 million to address extraordinary special education cost increases for eligible communities. Eligibility is to be determined, but we will fight hard to see that that $75 million has some dollars for the community of Franklin, because I know that that increase in special aid has hit every community in Franklin, and every community should benefit from that $75 million. Both the House and Senate bills would fully fund the state's obligation for charter school mitigation payments as outlined in the Student Opportunity Act. And the fair share revenue, which was voted in by the voters last November, and it took effect in January 1 of this year, is going to include $100 million for clean energy and energy efficiency projects at schools. I've long wanted the solar panels up on Franklin High. This is a great program at which you can dip into to fund that. And there's also $161 million to codify the Universal School Meals Program. We've heard a lot from folks about offering free lunches at public schools for all students, and the state is kicking in where the federal government ended that program. Lottery proceeds, we're going to authorize internet-based lottery games with proceeds going towards early education and childcare. In the last session, the legislature passed the Genocide Education Act, and I can assure you that both myself and Senator Roush were very active in promoting that legislation and getting it to pass. It was tremendous when the governor finally signed it in December of 2021. And we also included money to fund that project, $1.5 million in the budget towards funding the genocide education programs that we mandated. Franklin applied for and received a grant of approximately $35,000 from that fund, and I am certain that it's going to occur each year. In terms of local funding for programs in the community, once again, our budget is going to provide $50,000 for the Safe Coalition, and that's a total of $300,000 that the state has put into this program over the last six years, and that's something that Senator Roush and I have fought for very hard. The budget also includes $50,000 for the Franklin Food Pantry, for their building project. That brings that total up to $100,000. And that's in addition to the $500,000 grant that we were able to advocate for for mass development, and that's a total of $600,000 that went into the Franklin Food Pantry program from state funding. $25,000 for the Franklin Downtown Partnership, that's a total of $150,000 over the last six years. And $150,000 is in the budget for the Franklin Performing Arts Company. That's a program that was doing things during the COVID that no other theater in New England was doing. They were doing live performances out in that parking lot, and we thought that the state should thank them and help them for what they did for this community, and there's that money in the budget that we fought for to make sure it happened. The FY24 Chapter 90 Bond Bill is also one that's in a conference committee and had $200 million for local road and bridge maintenance, as well as $150 million in additional transportation-related grant programs. What that means for Franklin is approximately $933,000 in Chapter 90 funding for FY24. Other local updates I want to call to your attention, and I know I've been talking to Councillor Frangillo and Town Administrator Helen about expanding the rail trail from Grove Street down to Union Street, trying to get that spur that is owned by CSX. We've been unsuccessful in getting it. I reached out to Congressman Auchincloss. He's on the Transportation Committee for the federal government, told him of this particular problem. He has arranged a meeting with the CSX president and CEO next Wednesday. I'm flying down to DC to join Congressman Auchincloss, and we'll advocate to get that spur so that the community can complete this project and bring the rail trail to downtown. You may recall that your legislative delegation was able to secure $700,000 for that project, and I was talking to Jamie tonight, and I understand that the feasibility study is underway, and we should be getting some word on that within the next 12 to 18 months. We also funded an MBTA Quiet Zone study for the community, got that last session, and I understand that you are awaiting the results of that particular study. We were able to secure an additional $250,000 for the Franklin Ridge Affordable Housing Project, and we are going to continue to work with our state and federal partners to get that shovel-ready project over the hurdle. I don't think I need to tell you the importance of housing for this. So a couple of things on the committee work that I have been involved in. I was reappointed as Chair of the Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy Committee in February, and we're going to continue the work that we have done over the past two years. If you want to see a brief TV show on this topic, I did a panel discussion on NBC 10's Climate 2023 program. It's a half-hour special. It's running on NBC 10 right now, and it should be available online in the next couple of weeks. But it goes into some of the issues of where we're going with climate and energy-related legislation, what it's going to take to electrify every home and vehicle in the Commonwealth, and some of the challenges we're facing. Last session, we passed two major landmark climate bills into law, and I'm happy to report that from those pieces of legislation, the first commercial-scale offshore wind project will produce power for 400,000 homes by the end of this year. And we were supposed to go out on a boat tour on Friday of this week to go and see the first installation and the progress that's going, but the weather reports are not great for this Friday, so that trip has been postponed until September. But that is an amazing accomplishment that Massachusetts is going to lead the nation in offshore wind, and we're going to build from there. We also codified science-aligned decarbonization targets, protected environmental justice communities, accelerated clean energy generation, attracted economic investment in the Commonwealth, electrified our transportation and buildings, and invested in workforce development and technological innovation. There's a lot more to be done, and I can tell you, having Senator Roush as the Chair of the Environment Committee and myself doing the energy, we're going to do more to prepare more climate and energy and environmental legislation this session, because we are at a critical point in our history and in our time, and we have little time to save the planet. But some of the other good news that's happening in this space, in addition to the offshore wind coming by the end of the year, hydropower is going to be coming from Quebec. You may have heard about the voters in the state of Maine putting a block on hydropower coming through the state of Maine into the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That went through the courts of the state of Maine. The Supreme Court of Maine found that the vote of the citizens of Maine was unconstitutional, sent it to... of Maine was unconstitutional, sent it back to the court. A jury trial was convened, and in April of 2023, the jury said that project should advance, and hydropower should go to Massachusetts. That's 1,000 megawatts of energy that's going to be coming to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a result of those efforts. Now, that's legislation we passed back in 2016, coming to fruition today. The governor created a Massachusetts Community Climate Bank, secured with $50 million, and that's going to boost investment towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the building sector, and it's going to finance heat pumps, building envelope upgrades, water heaters, high-efficiency appliances, and solar panels for affordable housing projects. And we're looking at legislation this session to support and expand that program. We're going to look at siting and permitting reform. You may have noticed that it takes three or four years to get infrastructure that's necessary to complete the climate transition. It takes forever. We're going to attempt to reform that process through permitting reform. We're going to look at advanced metering. Advanced metering is to allow consumers and allow the utilities to get more robust information about what type of power is being used in our homes and businesses so that we can perhaps give better rates during different times of day to save consumers' money and also to lessen stress on the grid. We're going to be doing more electric vehicle charging infrastructure. You may have read that the Mass Pike ripped out all of its EV charges in the last month. We are going to speed that process along, to get them along the Pike, to get them along every highway and as many roadways in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as we possibly can. My vehicle is charging over at the Big Y this evening, so the longer I spend here, the more charge I get. We're also going to address some of the concerns with the Mass Save program. I don't know how many of you have sought rebates from Mass Save, but those are a number of calls that I get from constituents and others, and we're going to address those. We're going to look for federal funding under the Inflation Reduction Act that the federal government has passed, and we will consider and keep pursuing those funds for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Also, let me give you an idea. Some of the bills, other things that have been up to in the legislature, in addition to the climate bills, I worked on a bill for step therapy. Now, this bill's going to curtail the policy of insurance providers insisting on patients using lower-cost treatments before approving coverage of more expensive medications. That bill was designed to leave the decision about health care to the patient and the doctor, and that bill was signed into law just last year. I was honored to receive a distinguished advocacy award from the American Cancer Society for work on that bill. I already told you about the Genocide Education Act, and finally, my bill addressing teen sexting and revenge porn, which I've been working on since 2015. It was developed in cooperation with Officer Riley, who was here earlier tonight. It did pass the House, but it fell short on the last day of the session. We're going to try again. Persistence sometimes pays. Some other bills that I'm working on in this particular session include a college and high school bill that will give students an opportunity to get college credits while they're still in high school. That's going to help us with lowering college costs because the goal is to get an associate's degree before you get your high school diploma. So you'll have two years of college before you graduate from high school. I think many parents in the room will be delighted to think that their kid is going to start their junior year in college after they graduate high school. It can be done, and we're working out a way to do that. Also, working on legislation to increase financial compensation for people wrongfully convicted and imprisoned in our Massachusetts prisons, commuter transit benefits, menstrual products in schools, utility shut-offs, and a number of energy-related efforts. Also, you may have noted that Jamie and I testified on the Home Rule petition regarding a waiver for this community for expensive and outdated printed public notice mandates. You may recall that I filed a bill requiring these notices to be posted online because nobody was reading print papers, and that was back in 2014. It's gotten even worse, and now you folks are paying for advertising that people aren't seeing. So we were received well at the committee. So I will say that both Senator Roush and I have a great relationship and a strong relationship with Governor Healy and her administration, and happy to see that some of the things that she did that will help us in our work is that she appointed a climate chief who is going to coordinate between the various cabinet secretaries, and the Housing Secretary is Ed Augustus, who left Dean College. He's the first Housing Secretary for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We maintain a strong relationship with them, and I meet regularly with our Energy Secretary. Just a few tidbits that we should let drivers and you folks know about a new law, road safety law, that was passed last session but just came into effect. It requires motorists to provide at least four feet of space when passing a non-vehicle road user. That means bicyclists, like many of you in this room. If you're driving a bike, the car can't come closer than four feet away from you to intimidate you or throw you off the road. And we also requiring cyclists to use red lights while riding at night, and we're making it easier for communities to change speed limits. In March, we voted to extend remote and hybrid media options for public parties through March of 2025. The folks who are in Zoomland probably appreciate that, and, you know, I continue to hear from friends around the state about how Franklin is such a great model for so many of these particular programs. And finally, I met recently with Inspector General Jeffrey Shapiro. He's new on the job, but he's going to be offering some public procurement training at no cost to every community, so I'm urging you to take advantage of that. That's a summary of some of the things that Senator Roush and I have been up to, and I'm sure she's got a host of other things, but we look forward to hearing your questions or any other things that you would like us to look into. But thank you for the opportunity to share these pieces. Thank you for the service that you give day in and day out to this community, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share this news with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Roy. Senator Roush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything left?
My good friend. Amazingly, yes, actually. I did check off a couple of things on my notes that Jeff has already covered, and I will try to be quick and brief. But always a pleasure to be here with all of you and my dear friend as we continue to do this work together in service to the community of Franklin. So you already heard about the increases to the UGA funds, the Chapter 70 funds, the Chapter 90 funds, so I'll skip that part. In addition, in the fiscal '24 budget, in addition to the Franklin-specific funding that you heard from Representative Roy, I was also able to secure in the Senate budget $65,000 for the continued implementation of universal mental health screening for all students in grades seven and nine for the upcoming school year right here in Franklin. So I know that's been a longtime priority, a shared priority for this community, and so really proud to partner with all of you and with Jamie and with Jeff to continue supporting that work with this allocation. In addition, the Senate iteration of the budget, which, again, the House, the Conference Committee, as Representative Roy mentioned, is still in the process of hammering out all the details, but hopefully that will come to us soon. I've just been informed that we are going to be in boats next week, so hopefully we'll get that done. Over $503 million for the Special Education Circuit Breaker, which is statewide funding. That's a pretty significant increase. $230 million for charter school reimbursements, $97 million to reimburse school districts for regional school transportation costs, which is a 90% reimbursement rate, and $1.5 billion, that's billion with a B, for affordable and accessible, high-quality, early education, and to support the workforce in childcare. That is a historic investment in the Senate budget, something that, especially as the only mom of kids under 10 in the entirety of our state senate, something I have been particularly laser-focused on and very proud that my colleagues and I were able to move that forward. That represents an increase of more than 30% over fiscal '23 as we look ahead to fiscal '24. On the climate side, you heard some of this from Jeff, a significant increase to the amount of funding for our Secretaryate of Energy and Environmental Affairs, more than 25% of an increase to this particular area. It's something that we both work very closely on because of our appointments in our committees. But some of the funding side, just shy of $150 million for DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, to support our state parks and outdoor enjoyment, $8.8 million for the Environmental Justice Program, which Jeff also mentioned. In the Senate iteration of the budget, that's more than a $7.5 million increase from last year, so we have some pretty significant increases in that space. $83 million for the Department of Environmental Protection, $48 million, just shy, for the Department of Agricultural Resources, $10 million for climate change adaptation and preparedness, and $5 million for the Division of Ecological Restoration, and $8 million and change for the Department of Public Health's Environmental Health Bureau, which addressed the effects of climate change on public human health. So we have a significant investment in this space and also in the space of the intersections of climate change and environmental preservation and protection with human health, which we know is deeply interconnected. And further on the human health side and in relation, actually, to the $65,000 that I mentioned earlier, I'm very proud to have championed what's called the Hey Sam program. Hey Sam is a state-funded, state-supported, youth mental health support text line, right? So we need to meet young people where they are. This idea actually came from young people in my Senate district, including young folks right here in Franklin who met with me...
You saying us old timers don't text?
You know, our phones are bigger. But anyway. You know, in the older age brackets, can often have an easier time finding a private space to actually have a phone conversation. If you're a young person, you probably don't have that, right? You're either at school with people or at home with people or other places with people. And so if you want to have a private conversation, texting is kind of the only space that you might have to do that. So when we heard from young people who came to what I called Student Speak, a youth town hall, teen town hall, we had adults who wanted to zoom in for it. We said, no, you're not allowed. It's just for youngsters. And they came, and they spoke very clearly about how they needed better and different mental health supports. And three weeks later, I had secured a quarter of a million dollars for the pilot program that launched and has now become what is called Hey Sam. Hey Sam is now fully functioning. It has been fully funded. We secured the full funding in the fiscal '23 budget through an amendment process. This year, because of the program's amazing success, it actually has a 100% success rate de-escalating young people who are contemplating personal harm and suicide. What do you know? What else do you... I don't know anything else that has 100% success rate, but this program, this program works. And it has been so successful that the funding for it, the full funding for it, is actually baked directly into the base budget that came out of Senate Ways and Means, which is a testament to the great work that Samaritan's is doing, operating that program, and also the work that all of us are doing to help ensure that youth are getting access to that system. Much more funding in the personal health space, but given the time, I'll kind of skim over much of that. Some of the other legislation that we've been able to move so far, from the administrative partnership that we were hearing about earlier with regard to the legislature, those of us in the legislature and Governor Healy, we created a new Secretary of Housing and Living Communities, right? This is the position that Ed Augustus now holds. Super important and thrilled to see that come to fruition and very much look forward to working in partnership with all the folks involved, including all of you, with regard to ensuring housing affordability and accessibility. Some additional legislation that is...
...that is...
Also in the Conference Committee is a tax package. How are we doing on the tax side? We're good?
Yeah, well, yes.
Rebooting? Cool. Okay. There are a number of significant provisions in that bill, both the House iteration and the Senate iteration, that put money back into people's pockets, right? Especially in economically challenging times, including increases to the earned income tax credit, the child independent tax credit, H-DIP for housing, further housing development, low-income housing, senior circuit breaker with regard to taxes and raising the threshold on the estate tax. Both the House and Senate raised that threshold to $2 million. So I look forward to seeing that final compromise bill come out of committee as well, which I hope will happen shortly. Committee work, you heard a little bit about the Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy Committee from Jeff. I serve, again, as a reappointed chair by our Senate President of the Joint Committee on the Environment and Natural Resources. Basically, anything and everything that has to do with climate change, environmental protection, and planetary preservation that is not about energy and utilities, everything else comes to my committee. That's air, water, soils, plastics, more forestry, sea marshes, everything that you can think about comes to our committee. We have had five joint hearings so far covering topics such as oceans, waterways, wetlands, water resources, pesticides and pollinators, climate change, plastics, recycling, and waste management. And through those hearings, we've actually heard testimony on more than half the bills that have come to this committee. We have over 300 bills pending. It's one of the largest committees by volume in the legislature, and we have five additional hearings coming up in the fall on topics like air pollution, environmental justice, land policy in open spaces, animals, fishing, hunting, trafficking, and septic systems. Surprisingly exciting topic, septic systems. So as I mentioned, we have over 300 bills. We've heard 165 so far. We have, just shy of 150 left to go, and very much look forward to really digging in and doing some really serious work this term in this space. I also meet monthly with the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs because we have such a significant amount of work to do in this space, and we're really forging the networks and collaborative partnerships that I think are going to foster that work. In addition, some other things that have been percolating, some of my high-priority legislation. I filed more than five dozen bills this term. They are moving through the legislative process. One of those bills is, in fact, on plastics. It is called the Plastics Reduction Act. It is a sort of mini omnibus bill that covers single-use plastics to drastically reduce those single-use plastics throughout the Commonwealth. We know they are not only made through the use of fossil fuels, which is a massive pollutant to our planet. They are actually very rarely recycled. Less than 10% of our plastics are actually recycled. So we are just creating more and more garbage and dumping it largely into our water systems. And I recently learned that it takes 200 years, I'm going to share this because it's just so shocking, 200 years, right? Even our children won't be around to see that, for a single plastic fork to degrade. It does not biodegrade. It breaks down. It becomes teeny-tiny microplastics that then enter our water, our air, our soils, our food systems, and our own bodies, right? Microplastics are now found in humans. We all have them in our bodies right now, and once they're in there, you kind of can't get rid of them. So we need to do some pretty serious work to reduce plastics, and I'm very proud to champion that work. I also have a bill to set a specific ratio for mental health counselors for students in schools. That bill actually just had a hearing. Several bills in voting access and elections and election reform, continue to do that work, and a couple of bills, several bills, but two in particular in reproductive health. And a couple of bills, several bills, but two in particular in reproductive health and access, which we know, especially as we consider what's happening nationally, is becoming increasingly important here in Massachusetts as we continue to ensure that all people have access to the full spectrum of reproductive and gender-reforming care. One of those bills would help medical students in residency in programs that are in states that are now anti-abortion states where they cannot get training on providing reproductive care. One of the bills that I filed would create a limited licensure process so that those medical residents could come to Massachusetts just to get that care training because they literally can't get it in their states of medical residency right now. And then another bill, which is a much larger bill, is called the Abortion Access Act. Some of you might have heard about the lawsuit for a pretty significant misdiagnosis and misread of an ultrasound that was performed at an anti-choice center not too far from here in Worcester that put a pregnant person's life in very serious danger. My bill would address that and then some. So I look forward to continuing to do that work as we build upon the successes of our prior terms, including the Reproductive and Gender-Reforming Care Protections Bill that we enacted into law swiftly after the Dobbs decision came down. I was really proud to be on the team that did that work and actually legislative text that I personally wrote served as a compromise base between the senate and the house and is now law here in Massachusetts. So that's some of the committee work, some of the priority legislation. Other things that are going on, I continue to run my Small Business Advisory Council, which has been absolutely terrific. We've had great success. We right now have three Franklin businesses, La Cantina, 67 Degrees Brewing and Escape Into Fiction, one of our newest businesses in town, all on the council. And we've had, we've had legislative success last session. And the council also inspired a fiscal '24 budget amendment, which we called Green the Garbage, which would create, was adopted unanimously in the senate, create $150,000 pilot program to help businesses create backend composting. Also helps not only to meet what, what customers are looking for, but also to further protect our planet and get materials out of the waste streams. In addition, on the constituent service side, direct communication and support for people, since my first term in office, we have addressed more than 2,155 questions, concerns and advocacy matters just from Franklin residents. And that's including correspondence by email, phone call and letters. 481 of, of those supports have happened this term alone, so just in the last few months, including a variety of casework issues like Franklin High School students who are coming to talk about funding for arts education, helping people get their passports in collaboration with Congress and Auchincloss and other members of our federal delegation, and questions about mass health coverage and access. We are also finally now able to start doing some in-person, in-district town halls, which I am super excited about. Wanted to do this since my first term and then COVID hit and all those plans got derailed. So we are going to be launching those in the fall. We'll be doing one right here in Franklin on October 16th. I look forward to seeing all of you there, I hope, over at the senior center, and we'll be providing more information on that shortly.
What about food?
Oh, candy. We're going to have some candy, yeah, because you can't have a town hall without candy, in my opinion. And I-
Pizza. I think pizza.
Pizza. Are you singing for pizza for dinner? Oh, terrific.
Do what I can.
I continue to feel so honored to represent this amazing town in this amazing senate district and continue doing this work both on the policy side, funding side and the direct support side. Catch me on various media pretty regularly. You can catch us on social media. I have a monthly newsletter that goes out, monthly office hours that alternate between in-person and virtual. You can sign up on the website. And really grateful for the opportunity to be with you and, and Jeff and to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Senator Roche. Questions or comments? Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to both of you and thank you for that great presentation. You're both doing so much incredible work for Franklin and it's truly appreciated. We heard from our town clerk earlier that there will be a vote coming soon on Tri-County. And we're hearing an awful lot from folks about just how tough it is right now with high costs of inflation, with, we had to put forth, you know, some higher sewer expenses. We had to put forth a lot of things, right? So I think people are pinched. And when the Tri-County folks came to us to make a presentation, the estimate for that new building was $250 million. And that will get spread out amongst 10 communities, but they also spoke about how woefully unsupported and underfunded they felt they were from a state level for all of the regional vocational technical schools. So I wonder if you can just speak to both our Tri-County students and parents and the voters and kind of share, you know, maybe your thoughts on what, if that was to pass, maybe what could, you know, happen from a state level to make that maybe a little less of a burden to towns like Franklin?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, you know, in our forthcoming, soon-to-be-finalized fiscal '24 budget, at least in the Senate iteration, we've increased the regional school transportation allocation. That does support that funding or those, those costs to a degree that at least in my tenure I've never seen before. So, you know, that, that is coming up. I will say that just in general, there's a, you know, there's a finite pot of money, as you all know. And I'm certainly open to conversations about new revenue streams that would be able to reinvest funding into various government, state and local programming, including education. But we have a pot of money and, and it is finite, right? We are not the federal government. We cannot operate at a deficit. Thank goodness we're not, not operating like what's going on in DC these days. But, you know, there is a constant dialogue, and I am a member of the Education Committee, so I'm hearing much more of this dialogue over the course of this term, about the interplay between district schools and regional schools and where, where the funding belongs and, and also cars, communications and discussions about school building specifically, which is an entity that's run through the treasurer's office, you know, the school building authority and how that process works. It is a, you know, again, it's a finite amount of money. There are a lot of different perspectives, right? It's not even two sides. There are many sides about, and many different thoughts about where our education dollars should be going, you know, whether it's district schools, charter schools, regional schools, you know, what, what do we do and how do we allocate those dollars? And I think we, you know, continue to try to make the best decisions we can in the moment with the resources that we have available to us. I will say that because of the fair share amendment, we now have an influx of a little bit more money specifically toward the education space that is being used and, and spent, all of it. And, you know, and that also includes continuing to fund the Student Opportunity Act as we roll in that funding from the legislation that we passed back in 2019. Pretty sure it was 2019.
Just a few things that I, I can add on to that. Right now, one penny of the sales tax is devoted towards school building assistance. And I don't think there's an appetite to increase the sales tax at this particular moment. So that funding source is not available. But more importantly, the need for high-quality vocational education can't be understated. Just today, a report came out from the Mass Clean Energy Center that we are going to need 38,000 employees in the clean energy sector. Those are not all college-educated folks. We need, we need some good electricians. We need some good plumbers. We need good tradespeople. And our vocational schools are traditionally the place to do them. I know that the Tri-County officials looked at trying to refurbish their building. And I think some of the lessons that we learned in the Horace Mann Building Committee and the Franklin High School Building Committee, maybe refurbishing or attempting to refurbish a 1970s building to bring it up to 2023 standards and codes is not the wisest choice. So they made the choice to start fresh, build new, and the price of schools has gone up dramatically. The more we wait, the more expensive that school is going to be. I know it's a tough nut for the community and a vote will be presented to the community, number one, to approve that school. And then, number two, will be how to pay for it, whether you are going to allocate $2 million from your budget or whether you are going to go back to the voters to see if they want to do a debt exclusion to finance that project. Not the easiest of decisions, but that is, that is the prospect when there is demand for vocational students and when there is a demand for a new facility to provide the resources to these students, those are the choices that folks have to make. And it will be up to the voters to choose the direction in which they wish to move.
I, I had a second thought and thank, thank you for that. I think obviously I want to advocate for every penny we can for the trade schools and vocational and technical schools. I do think it's our future for, for many kids that are just college-bound, not that path. And we need to think about the workforce and connect the dots on a lot of the energy and various discussions that you're having. But I hope you can, this is more of a state issue, but it affects us locally. I know that you're both like absolutely aware of what's going on nationally. And the fact that the news came up today about 19 state attorney generals asking President Biden for permission to get medical records on trans people is just, it's alarming. It's disgusting. And that does trickle down to affect people in Franklin. People, people are scared and they're really looking to elected officials. And I think particularly the two of you being our voice and our advocates on Beacon Hill as to make sure that the protections stay in place. So I just hope you-
Just make sure you make it clear that it's not the Attorney General of Massachusetts.
It is, it is not the AG of Mass. It was 19 attorney generals elsewhere. We'll leave it at that.
I always say be grateful that you live in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
But if, if you could just maybe briefly speak to the, the protections in place and speak to the citizens here in Franklin that might be worried when they turn on their televisions or their social media and see news like that?
We have people who are seeking to move into the Commonwealth of Massachusetts because it is a welcoming state and so many welcoming communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We have probably the most extensive protections in place for all citizens of the Commonwealth, and we welcome all citizens to, to come here to Massachusetts. And I can't think of a safer space in the entire United States of America than the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And that message, I think, rings clear in, in what we do each and every day to protect individual rights, so.
I'll just add that, you know, Massachusetts, just not that long ago, in November, what, how many months is November? Eight months ago, we elected the first openly LGBTQ governor in the nation. She was quickly followed by another one, like the next day. So now we have two, right? And she just recently started something of a campaign, both here in Massachusetts and also in places like Florida with messaging that says Massachusetts for us all, that specifically features LGBTQ community members. This is a welcoming state and, and I know, because I hear even from, from elementary students, let alone middle school and high school students, that it is a scary time. It's a scary time. It's a hard time. You know, and certainly we hear from adults as well. And so, you know, if you're, if you are a person who is feeling stressed or worried about that, you can reach out to Hey Sam. You can text Hey Sam and, you know, you'll get a peer response confidentially and anonymously immediately. You can always reach out to either of us and our teams. We are here to help and we are here to answer questions as you may have them and direct folks to resources. And, you know, we will continue, both of us deeply dedicated to ensuring that, that Massachusetts is in fact a space for us all. And, you know, and include, that absolutely includes right here in Franklin.
Thank you for your advocacy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. And only just to maybe answer a little more clearly one of your questions, Jamie and I just an hour ago spoke about Tri-County. Do you want to-
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chairman, really quickly. So the project cost is at, right now is a hair, slightly under $300 million for the Tri-County school. I just want to assure everybody through the MSBA process, Mass School Building Authority, under the current scope of what the building is, there still needs to be the final approval of the application, the vote by the voters in October, and then they get into a design phase where they get into the actual specifics of every square inch in the design. But the voters can expect a project of about $300 million and the state's going to cover about a third of that. So in the old days of MSBA, which we know very well, back in 20 years ago when it was created, those percentages were higher, right? And to Representative Roy's point a moment ago, he was spot on, a penny of the sales tax is dedicated to that fund. And I'm sure there's bills up on the hill and other advocates trying to get that revenue source up, right? Maybe another penny and a half or whatever the nature might be. But the state's working within the framework and the revenue it has. But still, to get about a third, you know, $90 million, $95 million paid for by the state is a pretty, pretty good chunk of money. But it's, unfortunately, it's a process, as you know well, Mr. Chairman. You know, it is what it is, as they said. And, but still, the state is, is doing that. So that obligation will not be borne by the taxpayers. And I know the Tri-County officials will be out in about through August and September and October to educate people on the actual cost impact to each household and stuff like that. So I hope that just clarifies for everybody a little bit of the, of the numbers.
Thank you, Jamie. I'm sorry.
I have a question regarding what he's saying. Do I have to wait?
Sure. Go ahead, next, Counselor Plegrey.
Thank you. Listening to what you said, could you just give an overview of, what is it, five communities that are going to have to be voting on this, correct? Is it five?
It's 11.
11. Wrong. Okay. And what's the percentage of, what has to pass? How many votes for it in order to, to pass and a school be built?
It's an aggregate 50% plus one.
Simple, simple majority.
Oh, okay.
Of the aggregate vote of all 11 communities.
Right. So it's not 50%. It's not 50% in each community, right? 50% total.
Six, six, six towns, right?
11.
11.
It's 11 community. No, no, no. How, what percentage of the 11?
11 towns vote. They total all the votes from all the towns together. And they, it's a simple, it's a simple majority, meaning one more, then one more yes vote, then a no vote and it passes.
I thought it went by towns, but no, that's, okay, I get it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think people will be very happy, you know, to hear how that's going because I've already been asked by people, what if Franklin doesn't pass it, do we still have to pay? Yes, we have to pay, but it's the percentage. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chandler?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I rep and Senator. Just a quick statement and then an easy question. You know, I actually mentioned this to you today, Rebecca, everything comes down to money, everything. So everything you guys are doing, I mean, you have the priorities for this town down pat. I mean, the Safe Coalition, the Food Pantry, all the mental health, these are the things that we need and you're right on it. And, and I got to give you great accolades, the genocide education, I mean, just alone, the Jewish and Armenian population of this town alone, you know, each person knows somebody or had someone in their family probably that went through this. And I can't tell you how much we appreciate everything that you guys did with that. So, and lastly, the affordable housing, can you just touch on that quick? I know now we have Mr. Augustus there, that might help. Anything that's coming to Franklin in that realm?
Well, I did identify the $250,000 for Franklin Ridge, that's for affordable housing.
Place?
Yeah, yeah. So that's one piece. But, you know, priority of getting affordable housing is, and getting people places to live is a huge priority for the legislature, a huge priority for the governor, and the fact that we established a Housing Secretary for the first time in the history of the Commonwealth ought to send a signal to people that we are taking this seriously. The other thing about it, you know, it's an economic boom for communities to get additional housing, more consumers in their communities, more taxpayers in their communities, more patrons at their restaurants and their businesses. So there's a lot to be said for increasing the stock of housing, the worst thing that you can hear, and we do hear it from some of the folks who work in our own government here in Franklin, that they can't afford to live in the community where they work. And we need to do better on that, and that is certainly a priority, and I do want to thank you for your comments on the Genocide Education Act. I can tell you, serving in the legislature, that was probably one of the highlights for me, was being there when the governor signed that bill, to see it finally come to fruition. The idea for that bill came to me from a constituent in Medway, a little old lady who sat me down to teach me about the Ukrainian Holodomor, and something I had never heard of, and it morphed into a bill on genocide completely, and it was not an easy bill to get over the hurdle because there was so much controversy associated with it. But it was a very proud moment when that bill came to fruition and was signed, and I'm so thrilled that so many communities, I think it was 183, who took advantage of the grant funding last session to offer these programs. And there's nothing more that teaches you more about humanity than genocide education, because we know morally that it's wrong to take the life of another human being, but it happens repeatedly, and history repeats itself. And the only way we're going to change that is to develop a set of educated people in a generation that can change that, and this is one small step in that effort.
I'll just add, I remember that bill signing, it was a really powerful one, actually, completely agree. In addition, as we implement that education and, you know, strive to achieve better understanding and better compassion among the people in the Commonwealth, we also, in the Senate budget, funded the nonprofit security grant program at $4 million this year, because we know we still have risk, we still have risk, and that too is scary. But the state is, you know, putting money behind ensuring that people are safe and that people stay safe. And, you know, and that's been something I've championed, and also, you know, along with the genocide education, we also need to be teaching people how to do this, how to engage in civics, what civics looks like. And I was proud to champion a pretty stark increase to the Civics Education Trust Fund as well in this fiscal year, the forthcoming, well, technically, the current fiscal year. Just coming back to housing, I'll just add, in addition to Representative Roy's comments, one of the things I hear about pretty heftily, in addition to, I can't live in the community where I work, or my kids can't live in the community where they grew up because they can't buy in, is this concept of the missing middle. So I've seen some heads nod, so I think probably a lot of us have heard about this. Right, how do we effectively direct funding and supports and incentives to build starter homes, right? Homes for middle-income people, or trying, you know, making a good, making a decent living, want to send their kids to school, and be able to, you know, keep the roof over the head, and, you know, put a little bit into that nest egg, into that biggest single investment that most people make, and, you know, ensure you also have food on the table and healthcare and other stuff like that. So, you know, so finding that right, finding the right set of policy choices and funding implements for that missing middle is an ongoing conversation and something that, you know, to all of you, if you hear any good ideas, by all means, let us know, because those conversations are definitely ongoing at the state level right now. And actually, we just got a briefing from my, the Senate Chair of the Housing Committee last week, or maybe it was the week before, a little hazy on the timeline. But we continue to do this work and continue to engage in this process, and I think when we come back, I hope when we come back next year to do this again, that we'll have another update for you on that front.
In closing, next time I'm in your office, Rep. Roy, hopefully I can hold that pen that was used to sign that bill. That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler. Councilor Sheridan.
Yeah, thank you for everything, all the environmental stuff, and Senator Rush, I was really excited about the increased funding for mental health. As a teacher, I can see that, also the early child education. And Representative Roy, thank you for the rail trail. And I'm also, I'm still stunned, people actually oppose the genocide bill?
Yeah.
People are opposed to all sorts of things.
That's true.
Some people didn't believe that the genocide that occurred in their country was a genocide, and they wanted to dispute that, you know, how can you call what happened in 1919 a genocide when they didn't define it until 1940? So those are some interesting conversations, I will say, I'll leave it at that.
And Senator Rush, can you expand on environmental justice?
I can't, yeah. This is also a joint effort between the legislature and the administration, the Healey Administration, to create this Office of Environmental Justice and really do some deeply dedicated work in the environmental justice space. My committee here is, I think, receives, not all, I'm sure that there are some environmental justice bills that go to TUE and various other legislative committees, with the bulk of them come to the Joint Committee on the Environment and Natural Resources. And that hearing, I don't have the date for it right in front of me, but it'll be coming up in the fall, where we hear multiple pieces of legislation specifically about environmental justice issues, including, similar to the citing work that Representative Roy is doing on the TUE Committee with regard to energy and utilities, we deal with citing about waste management, for example, and air pollution that results from burning waste, for example, or incineration. And there's a suite of bills that come, that are going to come up for a hearing shortly. And so we're directing multiple millions of dollars specifically into environmental justice. We did some work in legislation that we passed last session, you know, in the plastics bill, my Plastics Reduction Act, for example, that deals with plastics and waste management, there's an additional funding stream from bag fees, for example, and fines for violating the rules that would be set forth in that bill to support environmental justice populations to be able to access cloth bags and reusable bags, right? So we have, you know, multiple different pieces of work happening with regard to environmental justice, both on the funding side and on the policy side, and also on the administrative implementation side.
Thank you. And as far as plastic, I teach civics, and I saw, I had a video I used to show on CNN about Midway Island where the battle took place, and it's all full of plastic.
Yeah.
Full.
It is absolutely terrifying.
It's mostly paradise, it's full.
We are literally smothering our planet in plastic.
And the fish, right, then the birds eat the fish, and then the fish, then the birds die, and then the bird disappears, but the plastic is still there on the beach.
Plastic remains, right.
So thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sheridan. Councilor Frangello, you probably have to be a little careful.
Yeah, he's got to be very careful.
Not too many, not too many tough questions.
Who's the boss?
And not too many softballs.
He's permitted to throw as many softballs as he wants.
Sorry.
For those who don't know, I get the unique pleasure of working in the State House, and I don't think we always appreciate how lucky we are to have the legislators that we do, that are well-respected within the building, that have access to people and opportunities, and that are really dedicated to advocacy on our behalf and are really responsive to our needs. Really, I wish I had, you know, a nice, strong one to give you, but I'm very-
You can stop right there. That's very well.
Very proud of the work that you do, and thanks for being responsive.
Thank you, Councilor Frangello.
That was it?
He's a smart man.
Top that.
He's a smart gentleman, top that.
Top that.
Councilor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, I'm kind of still in shock from-
Yeah, me too.
But it's all good.
Compliments are greatly accepted.
Yes, he is absolutely correct. I think we are really lucky in Franklin to have the two of you advocating for us all the time tirelessly. Just the list that you read today, tonight, kind of, I started writing it down, and then I was like, oh, I can't even write any, I can't keep writing them down. It's really amazing that you then do all this work for the entire state in your subcommittees, and those are really important roles that you have in those. And I think a lot of the questions, you already answered all of my questions, I think, but there's, the rail trail, thank you for your, both of your advocacy, for all of that, for the tunnel, for the, to keep on CSX and to go down to DC, that's amazing. Permit reform is key to helping things get built, and so thank you for that work. I would like, could you explain a little bit more, Rep. Roy, about the wrongfully imprisoned, how you're going to help the people when they get out, or what does that program include?
So, I want you to think for a moment of what it's like to sit in a prison for 10, 20, 30 years for a crime you never committed, and with advances in science and DNA, they're able to prove that you didn't commit that crime. It happens to be a gentleman from Milford, Massachusetts, and I remember growing up in Milford, I remember this murder taking place, and they wrongfully convicted a man who sat in jail for 30 years. Now, I've been fighting in courtrooms for over 35 years, and most of the fights are over money, and money is, you know, something that changes hands really fairly freely. But when you take somebody's liberty away and you deprive them of the opportunity to do what we take for granted each and every day, I can't think of a more egregious affront to another human being. And currently, under the law, we release these people after they've been wrongfully convicted, send them back out into the street with nothing.
Right.
With absolutely nothing. Reintegrate yourself into society, not the easiest thing to do. So what this bill would do, would give them immediate cash so that they can begin to make a down payment on an apartment and pay the fees associated with the rent, get an education. It would provide them with social services and a support network to help them find a job, find a home, reintegrate into society. And it would also lift the cap on damages that that person can seek in a lawsuit. Right now, it's capped at $1 million. Now, we ask a jury to listen to the evidence in the case and what's been deprived from that human being, what has been taken from them, and we ask that jury, what amount of money will fairly and reasonably compensate that individual for what's been taken from them? And there was a case not too long ago where a jury announced a verdict of $33 million. That's what they valued this person's taking of freedom for so many years. But under the current state of the law, that verdict was reduced to $1 million for a cap. Why are we asking juries to award a sum of money if we're not going to take their word? Why waste their time sitting there if we're not going to do it? We want to know what will fairly and reasonably calculate them, and for taking that person's liberty, we ought to pay them what the jury renders as a verdict. So this bill would provide instant cash for somebody to help them reintegrate into society, would give them the support networks they have, and would lift the cap.
That's wonderful. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I know it's been, oh, did you want to add to it?
I was just going to say, I wish I'd kept my notes from my first year of law school, because when my very first year of law school, I actually worked on this issue. I wrote some model legislation for compensatory damages for people who had been wrongfully convicted of crimes and later exonerated through DNA testing, the New England Innocence Project, to prepare that work. So it is, it's both exciting and sad that it is still happening, this work is still ongoing, that we haven't actually solved this problem yet, because I went to law school, you know, not yesterday, and it should have been done already, and it's not. I really appreciate Jeff's leadership on this.
The other thing about a cap that you should be aware of, gives a disincentive to settle the case.
Right.
You know, because we'll take it to trial, because the worst we can lose is a million dollars.
Right.
You know, let's make the system more fair.
I think what your bill is really great. I mean, we really needed it, you see it all the time, like, how can people actually have a life? But, so thank you for that work, your work on that. Rebecca, your reduced plastics bill, which is really great, I won't go, I like rant about plastics all the time, everybody already knows about that, but I just think, like, one of the things that would be really neat to be able to include in this, I don't know if it's in there or not, but plant-based materials, some kind of new manufacturing in Massachusetts. Let's make, let's use MIT in the material science that we have and make something that's going to biodegrade.
As a plastic alternative.
Right.
So I was actually just in Worcester yesterday at a biotech think tank, basically, biotech startup space, and one of the startups working in that, it's like maker space for a bunch of budding biotech companies, and one of them is actually making, right now, biodegradable plastic alternatives. And I said, tell me more about that, and they said, you have three minutes before you have to go to your next thing, and I said, okay, we got to talk more. So I absolutely share your interest in this particular issue, and I'm going to learn more from those folks, and if you have any other insights, Mel, you know, let's talk, because, you know, one of the things I hear from the folks in my Small Business Advisory Council, you know, they want to shift away from plastics, but if you're talking about, say, takeout containers, right, if you go to a compostable alternative and you want to have a sauce, it's just going to leak all over you.
Yeah.
Right, and so how do you make the change when you don't have an alternative, right, a reasonable alternative product? And so, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of phenomenal to think that there's a room much smaller than this room, right, maybe probably even smaller than the tech booth over here, where someone's making, you know, microorganism-created material that is a plastic alternative. Right now, it's a long way to get to market, and to figure out how to make those materials commercially viable is a very big challenge, so.
Chris appreciates the shout-out.
There is a crop out there, it's called hemp, right? And so it could help our farmers, it could help everybody, we already know we can make plastic, plant-based plastics out of hemp, and so that might be something that would go faster. Faster alternative, thank you, Councilor Jones. I have one, just one quick question, I don't know if you know anything about an update on the redesigning of the flag or the seal, has there been any update on that? Probably not.
I haven't heard anything in the last, you know, couple months. I do know the commission was meeting.
Yeah. They continue to meet, so.
Okay, thank you. As long as they're still meeting, that's fine.
They're still doing the work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Councilor Plegrey, did you have another?
Just a couple of things.
Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you both for being here tonight. Very, very interesting, all the things that you brought to our attention. But I'm not surprised. We do have some wonderful people in legislature that is helping our town. I would like to know on the plastic bottle issue, okay, plastic issue. Plastic bottles, can't we do something about putting a five-cent refund or anything on that so that people won't just throw them out? I mean, I can walk from my house to Delcott, and there are numerous plastic water bottles. Because everybody's using them now. And also the nips.
Yep.
I mean, what can we do about that if we put some kind of a refund, you know, to turn them in like we did with the cans? I wonder if something like that would work. I don't have the answers.
I will tell you that she gets all the plastic stuff, but when it comes to the bottle bill, that comes to my committee.
I know. It makes no sense.
So I do all things telecommunications, utilities, and energy.
Absolutely no sense.
And the bottle bill. So we have many bills before us. And one of the, one of the pieces is to indeed add plastic bottles, add nip bottles, and perhaps increase the rate to 10 cents to encourage people to return them. I will also remind you that this question was presented to the voters probably 10 years ago. And there was overwhelming rejection of that concept. The debate on that issue is, number one, is it going to harm elderly or poorer people if they have to pay a larger deposit? And the second argument is from the folks who do the curbside recycling that don't require you to sort it. Their biggest moneymaker in terms of recycling what they take from your bins happens to be plastic bottles and cans. I don't know if that particular piece outweighs the need for an increase in the deposit or adding the bottles, the plastic bottles, but that's something we're grappling with at this very moment.
So I'll just add to that, that, you know, in my Plastics Reduction Act, we, the bill as it stands, would actually ban the sale of plastic nips in the state. This is something we're seeing many communities already do. Not glass ones, so you can still get it in glass, but plastic, right? So if you want to get your, you know, you can still have the product, just in a different container.
Empty your pockets.
I mean, look, I found, I found a couple of empty plastic nip bottles crushed on my kid's Little League field. I mean, it's just ridiculous. And it is completely unnecessary. And it is causing, it is, plastic is smothering our planet. I said it before. And so, so the tension that we deal with around this is, well, there are many, many points of debate and conversation, including the ones that were just mentioned by Representative Roy. But also, every time we make new plastic, we're further smothering the planet, right? So if we're not actually doing some really significant work to curtail the production of new plastic, we are, we're not doing the work, right? Because for every bottle that comes back, for every 10 bottles that come back, even through a rebate program, only one of them is actually going to get recycled, right? Less than 10% of the plastics out there actually can be recycled. And so there are, there's really innovative work going on now to make plastic bottles out of 100% recycled plastic, right? So there's no new generation of plastic, just reusing the old stuff and recycling. That's great, right? Good job. Right? Because we're not adding to the plastic pollution problem. But, you know, your, your liquid laundry detergent, that whole giant plastic jug, that can't be recycled because it's stained. The Coca-Cola, the local Coca-Cola folks, in fact, I think all Coca-Cola bottles, Sprite, right? Used to come in a green plastic bottle. Doesn't come in green anymore. Comes in clear, right? Because clear plastic is much more easily recycled. Green plastic kind of stinks, right? And it's much less likely. Black plastic basically can't be recycled, right? So there, you know, there's, there's a huge set of issues about how, how plastic is created, right? And whether that plastic can be recycled and done so cleanly. So it's a very complicated area. And there are various pieces in my Plastics Reduction Act that get at that.
Well, I'm glad you're both working on that. One last question I have. You said 25 million for for the schools and state aid?
29.2 million for Franklin.
29 million.
Chapter 7.
That's for, that's not just for Franklin.
Yeah, 29.2 for Franklin.
So that's added on to their budget right now. So what, I, I need to have it explained to you.
That it's, Franklin has been getting a great deal of Chapter 78 since the 90s, okay? And when I was on the school committee, the Chapter 78 was about 50% of the school budget. It's no longer about 50% of the school budget. It's more like 35, 40%. So it's still a large share. And if you compare with communities around Franklin, they're not doing nearly as well. So, and that was that home, the whole harmless piece that I was speaking about. Even though you're getting more aid than would be eligible under the formula, you'll still get that aid along with a minimal increase of $60 per student. So I think that's something like $285,000 annually for Franklin. So your Chapter 78 will continue to go up in this community. But it will, it will cover a less of a proportion of the school budget than it used to.
Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Continue to go up just like cola?
Yes.
At the same amount?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, you know, thank you guys for everything that you do. The Safe Coalition, the Food Pantry, the Downtown Partnership, Franklin Ridge. I'm hoping to see that get, get off, you know, off the ground as soon as we can. You know, the work you've been doing with the energy, the Wind Project, I know that's kind of been bouncing around place to place. Hope that becomes union labor. I was talking to my apprentices earlier today.
Project labor agreements are imperative as part of the bid process.
I was asking my apprentices if they had their sea legs, if they'd be willing to go out onto Martha's Vineyard, Nittucket Sound, and start working on the project. But my question actually is really just kind of a general question that is in regards to some recent excellent news, which, which, you know, for as long as I've been here, it's always such a great thing to hear. And this, I'm actually going to repeat a question that got posed to me and the rest of the council from a woman named Chloe from Boston.com. And I figured I'd pose this question to you guys. Just recently, it was announced that the town of Franklin was ranked number two, was the safest communities in America. And this woman, Chloe from Boston.com, asked a question, why do you think that? Why do you think that Franklin has been rated so highly? What's your thoughts?
Yeah, I saw. I will say, the leadership of the Franklin Town Council. That's the right answer. That's exactly what I was looking for.
At the service of all our public safety posts.
Look, you know, this is a community that values community, that looks out for one another, that hires the right public safety officials. You've got top-notch police, you've got top-notch fire officials. And when you have that combination and that constellation of the stars, it's absolutely no surprise that this is a great community. And I also will attribute the education that this community provides to its kids. It just shows you what this community values. And when you have that level of high value, it's no surprise that it's safe. And I, and I, and I mean it sincerely when I say, your leadership provides the engine that drives a safe community.
Just to add, I think the cultural, you know, the cultural town designation, cultural district designation and the work of the Cultural Council over the last several years in particular, I think, has also really come to foster that kind of community essence. And the work of the Downtown Partnership with the Strawberry Stroll and the Harvest Festival, all these things that bring people together. And in addition to your leadership, co-sign everything that Jeff just said. And just add on this additional piece, the more you bring people together, the stronger and safer community is. Kudos to you.
Well, my hope is with, with, with the strong leadership from the state and the continued strong leadership from the council, as well as the community as a whole, that we can actually push ourselves back to number one. We've been many times. And I hope we get back there. But this is still a proud thing to have. And I do, I don't disagree with you at all. That is truly boils down to leadership and the hard work, especially of the administration, the staff, and all the hard-working people that make this community a great place that it is to live and raise a family. Thank you, guys. Great to have you tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco.
I get nothing. No. No, I just, you know, obviously, you guys do a great job. You know, I, the genocide, I remember talking to you as you were going down to sign that bill and how excited you were and how excited we all were, because that was, that was excellent. And like you say, history repeats itself. We need to teach that. And in a couple of things, I mean, obviously, your climate, the work you do in the climate chain is tremendous. Obviously, you see the storms that we're getting now and everything, like in the heat. I work in the heat. Glenn, you work in the heat. You know exactly what we're talking about. But what, what are we doing with China and India? I mean, China just fired up 40...
I wish I had control of what was happening in China. The jurisdiction of the Massachusetts Great General Court does not extend there.
We're screwed.
You know what? We send, here's what I say on that point. Here's what I say on that point. For years, we've sent a lot of our manufacturing over to China. And we're beginning to see reshoring of that work and it coming. The only way you're going to get them to catch up is to, to hit them where it hurts and in its pocketbook.
That's great.
And we saw during COVID, the reliance that we had on places like China in getting our supply. And the supply chain disruption really opened our eyes to the need to bring things back. And you can see, I was at a meeting this morning about advanced manufacturing and Massachusetts' effort to get chips funding from the federal government to bring back the making of microchips here in Massachusetts. We developed the technology.
Right.
We built them here originally. And then we sent all that work overseas. Well, it's coming back. And we're, we're trying to create, you know, I hate to keep going back to the offshore wind, but we're trying to create a whole new industry here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that will create thousands of jobs. And New Bedford is the, is the classic example I like to point to. New Bedford, 100 years ago, was providing light through whale oil. 100 years hence, today, they can be providing light by being the port, the best port in the United States for the offshore wind industry. And those are, those are the ways we're going to compete with China. And they're going to see how well we can do. And the other, the other piece is that one thing we've learned is that through green jobs and through renewable energy, people can make money in this industry.
Oh, absolutely.
So the changing and the shifting mentality, seeing that there is economic sense to what we're doing in the climate space, India and China will catch on and see that, you know, this is, this is the way the world is moving. We have to get them to move in that direction.
I agree.
Because climate change and global warming does not know borders. You know, it doesn't stop at the Atlantic coast. It doesn't stop at the borderlines between states. It moves wherever it can. But Massachusetts has always been a leader in this space. And we're going to continue to lead. And we hope that the nation and the world will follow us.
I hope so. Couple other questions. You, I, I worked with a young lady this past winter. She made $41,000. And she was renting an apartment from a family member. She wasn't paying a lot of money. So she calls me because she needs fuel assistance. So I, you know, sent her to the senior center and I, I said, oh, you'll get it easy. $41,000 is not that much money to be making, paying rent and living on your own and everything like that. So if you could, could you, could you, because I felt kind of stupid afterwards because she got a, a letter back from the state saying that she made $3,000 too much. So, I mean, on your efforts, work and try to get some of these, some of that up a little bit. So, you know, people can work on, you know, getting some fuel assistance. Because that was, that's totally not right.
Well, we're going to get that person to change from a fuel-sourced system to an electric heat pump. And we'll get some assistance there.
Electric heat pump. And that's going to cost her $1,000, $1 million. That's what will happen.
We did, we did do some work on, on the fuel assistance program in the last term, particularly in the, in the peak of COVID, when people were, were really, really struggling. I don't have the current figures off the cuff, but that's something we can, you know.
Yeah, no, just, I mean, it's just something I want to bring to your attention. That's all. You know, I just, I thought it was easy, you know, because, well, you know, I don't think there's any middle class anymore. I think it's just either poor or rich. That's all you are, either poor or rich. I don't think there's any middle class. Not when we were younger. You know, my father worked one job. We lived fine. We were good. We work two jobs now. We can just barely make it two, you know? And that's just the way it is. As far as the trades go, and Counselor Jones will probably definitely agree with me, we're in big trouble if we don't get, in 10 years from now, we're in really big trouble. I mean, I get...
From a workforce perspective?
Deficit, deficit, skilled labor deficits.
Skilled labor.
Major. Sorry.
No, he's right. Skilled labors. But I got a job over in Massport for a mechanic, which pays $50.10 an hour. I got three people that applied. Years ago, you'd have $3,000. That's, I'm just saying, that's the trend going. So hopefully, Tri-County and, I mean, I didn't go to trade school, but I wish I did. But I had to learn that on my own. I had my cousin kick my butt by the time I was done. But besides that, but yeah, no, we need to get some more money in more things in the trades. Thank good to teachers like Counselor Jones with his electrical stuff. But outside of that, you guys do a great job. And I, I think, I can't thank you enough for everything you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco. And I'll end with a few asks.
You get the last word.
I get the last word. Just a few asks to take back to the State House with you. Obviously, Chapter 70 money, we appreciate the cola increase. The minimum increase, which I totally understand, because I was here when, I was there on the school committee when we were getting more than everybody else. But now, it's a little different story. Hopefully, that minimum can increase in a little higher percentage.
It could go from $30 to $60 per student. So that, we doubled what the government wanted.
And the Chapter, Chapter 90 money, again, very much appreciated. But again, those dollars are needed. More dollars are needed. And to answer your question, which I know you already know the answer to, Franklin High School is built to take solar panels on the roof. We just need somebody to give them to us.
China's knocking.
There you go.
And I, you know, Franklin Ridge, we appreciate the state funding that we're able to get. But we're still a long way from putting a shovel in the ground. Anything you can do to help us get there faster would be greatly appreciated. Getting the special ed, the search and break of money back, back online, we very much certainly appreciate that. Again, won't get into the unfunded mandates because we've all heard those forever. And I don't think those are going away anytime quickly. Broadening the MassSafe program, I think, would be really wonderful for everyone. And lastly, and this is just something that, near and dear to my heart. And as we move forward, as we talk about Tri-County, once upon a time, the state MSBA had a wonderful program. It was called the Model School Program. And Franklin was... And Franklin was benefit, benefited from that amendment. And people have no idea how much that, having that program in place when we built Franklin High School, when, and just to put it in perspective, because of that program, and I understand why they stopped it, but-
I don't. Maybe someday you can buy me a pair of towels.
Again, again, what was happening was the same architect, everybody was picking the same model school, so the same architect was getting all the work, and the contractor that was building them, the same contractor was getting all the, all the contracts. So the, every other architect in the state and every other contractor in the state said, hey, wait a minute, we're not getting any of the pie. Well-
Design a better building.
My answer, design a better building or build a better building. Because clearly Franklin saved 20% minimum on the models, on being able to build Franklin High School as a model school program. Put that in perspective when you talk about Tri County. 270, or $300 million, 20% of $300 million is $60 million if that program was still in place.
Yeah.
Please take that back and have that argument with the state because it is crazy that we stopped that program. Again, I'm off my soapbox, but-
Heard, loud and clear. Chair.
Okay. Jamie, any, anything?
Nope, all set.
Is there anyone in the audience that, in council chambers that has a question?
We are the new town administrator, Assistant Town Administrator. We'll introduce her.
What?
Sure. Jamie, would you like to, I, I'm sure they've met, but would you like to formally introduce-
Sure. And ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Franklin Town Council meeting. I'm Roller. My name is Jamie Helen. I'm the town administrator, and I am introducing to you the new deputy town administrator who Senator Roush knows very well because she was Justin Wellesley for three and a half years, which Senator Roush represents. And I know Representative Roy and I had a meeting last week with the town of Medway discussing Tri County. And I know he got acclimated, but we're welcoming Amy Frigilietti as our deputy town administrator to town with almost two decades of experience. Of course, she worked at the State House as well, and we're very excited to have her. Thank you, Councilor Jones.
Congratulations.
Senator Roush, Representative Roy, I would just piggyback on the softball from Councilor Frangello. Everything he, everything he said was emphatically true. We can't thank you enough for all you do for Franklin and for the other towns that you serve, but especially for us here in Franklin. We thank you for all you do and all you will do for Franklin moving forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Paul.
Legislation for action, bylaw amendment 23-900R. Chapter 170, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Stopping Standing and Parking, Subsection 170-15, Parking Prohibitions and Limitations, D. Parking Prohibited, Downtown Parking Map Amendment, Second Reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is bylaw number 23-900R, Chapter 170, Vehicles and Traffic, a bylaw to amend the code of the town of Franklin at Chapter 170, Vehicles and Traffic, in Article 4, Stopping Standing and Parking, Subsection 170-15, Parking Prohibitions and Limitations, D. Parking Prohibited. Being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, Chapter 170, Code of Town Franklin, Franklin Vehicles and Traffic, Article 4, Stopping Standing and Parking, Subsection 170-15, Parking Prohibitions and Limitations, D. Parking Prohibited, is hereby amended as such. The only revision to this is under D. Parking Prohibited. It says, "One downtown parking district boundaries are those contained on map captioned downtown parking district prepared by the Town Franklin Engineering Department dated July 13, 2016, and revised," this is what's changed, "and revised through the effective date of this legislation, the original which is on file with the town clerk and the copy which is appended heretofore as attachment 1, prohibitions and limitations on streets contained within the street district shown on said map. This bylaw amendment shall become effective on and after August 2, 2023, and the map currently on file with the town clerk is most recently revised shall remain in effect until August 2, 2023."
Move bylaw amendment 23-900R.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through Mr. Chairman, through the council. So tonight, just for the folks at home, a couple of small tweaks. This is the final and second reading of the parking bylaw map, just for the folks that were watching a few weeks ago, a couple of tweaks. One is the T had moved up one of the trains to, I believe, 5:08 a.m. Maybe that's a sign that a few more people are getting up early and taking the commuter rail to Boston, which is good, but, so we had to change the no over, the no overnight parking to make sure, originally it was 6:00 a.m., but obviously, we don't want to give those commuters tickets. And then that led to further discussion at the last meeting where we all celebrated an enormous compromise to have the no overnight parking in the lots Sunday through Thursday. You know, the nights people traditionally don't go out really, really late. And so the no overnight parking will be from 12:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., midnight to 5:00 a.m. And, and then on Friday and Saturday, when maybe we'll become a bustling nightlife in downtown Franklin again into the wee hours of the morning, the no overnight parking is from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. And as we heard from the chief at the last meeting, this should work out well from everybody's perspective, given the fact that there's some, some varying opinions. And then also, the other tweak to this is to just simply put in two-hour parking, the Davis-Ther lot, so that a lot of people don't put their cars there overnight for weeks and weeks and weeks on end. So those are from 8:00 to 4:00 each day, but it'll be free parking in the afternoons and early evenings and also the weekends for patrons of the library, downtown festivals, and also where the cars are really parked is for the Little League games. And so that should work out well until the Davis-Ther reuse committee decides to send any recommendations. So this legislation passed unanimously at the last meeting, and this will be the second reading. And the last comment I make, Mr. Chairman, I think some other councilors have used the new kiosks. The good news is I have not received any complaints yet, so that must mean a good thing. And expect some publicity over the next few months of trying to, I think people underestimate the change here. It used to be all parking permits on a quarterly basis. Our lots have never been open for daily use on a first come, first served basis. So we're going to try to do some micro-targeting ads out on social media for promoting downtown free parking at night for commerce, retail, eating out. But we're also, talked to Lily this week about doing some ads, trying to educate people that commuting parking is available on a day-in, day-out basis. Because that was one of the things that we did hear from the pandemic was, I don't want to pay for four months, or three months, right? I just want to go, I'm going into Boston now twice a week.
Right.
But I can't park there because I have to buy a parking pass for three months. It, it, you know, I just even saying that is like kind of stunning that we used to make people buy them in quarterly rates, right? So I think we're going to try to do some encouragement for folks that are commuting into Boston, use the train, whether it's sports games, work, play, whatever. And so once this is ratified, hopefully tonight, we can move forward with some of those communication tools to the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council?
Great changes.
Councilor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really quickly, really excited about this. I want to thank Chief Lynch and Lieutenant Riley, who was here earlier, for their help at the beginning, my colleagues on the EDC, Councilor Delarco for his wonderful idea.
Compromise.
And I used one of the kiosks the other day. Well, actually, I actually used an app on my phone to park, to catch the train and go into Boston to MMA policy meeting. And it just was really nice to know that I could have a place to park there, that I didn't have to go to Norfolk all the way down to Forge Park. I could park right downtown Franklin where I like, like could hang out down there. So thank you to everyone. I think this is a big deal, and I think Jamie's right, but, and thank you all. This is like awesome.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve bylaw amendment 23-900R. All those in favor, significant?
No.
Oh, roll call, sorry. A majority roll call votes required, so clerk will call a roll.
Cormier Ledger.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Frangello.
Yes.
Plegrey.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine zero, sir.
Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment 23-894 to amend Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of the Town of Franklin to add accessory dwelling unit, ADU definition, second reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment 23-894, changes to subsection 185-3 definitions. Accessory dwelling unit definition is only by law to amend Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of Town of Franklin. Being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, the Chapter 185, the Code of Town Franklin is hereby amended in subsection, subsection 185-3 definitions by adding the following text. Subsection 185-3 definitions, accessory dwelling unit or ADU, a self-contained dwelling unit, inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities, incorporated within a lawful, principal, single-family, or two-family dwelling, or within a detached building accessory to and on the same lot and in the same ownership as a lawful, principal, single-family, two-family dwelling use. The owner of the record shall live on the property, and the ADU shall maintain two means of egress, either directly from the outside or through entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling, sufficient to meet the requirements of the State Building Code. ADU shall be no smaller than what is allowed by State Building Code regulations and no larger than 900 square feet or 50% of the principal unit, whichever is less, and shall contain no more than two bedrooms. All public utilities shall be shared with the principal, primary residence, and a foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Charter and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 23-894.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through, Mr. Chairman. So the bylaw, as everybody knows, the accessory dwelling units legislation for action, the next three, B, C, and D, all address the ADU issue. Just for clarity, the one that we're on now is just the definition.
Okay.
And this is one of the pieces of legislation that was passed unanimously from the EDC to the council, to the planning board, back to the council. So this is not the legislation that had some debate. This was a legislation that everybody agreed on.
Yep.
Hope that made it easy.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Councilor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, it went through the steering committee of the Franklin for All project. I just want to add that in there. So we had, there were many, many people that had their hands in this, and I want to thank everyone involved, the town staff, the steering committee, the EDC, and I think Amy Love worked hard on, on the ADU, this, on this legislation, so I wanted to thank her as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 23-894. A majority roll call votes required. Clerk will call the roll.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Cormier Ledger.
Yes.
Frangello.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Plegrey.
Yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine zero, sir.
Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment 23-895R is further revised to amend Chapter 185, Attachment 8, Use Regulations, Schedule Part 7, Accessory Uses of the Franklin Town Code to add accessory dwelling residential units. This is the second reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the zoning bylaw amendment 23-895R, as further revised, a zoning bylaw to amend the Franklin Town Code at, at Chapter 185, Attachment 8, Use Regulation Schedule Part 7, Accessory Uses. Being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, the Chapter 185, the Code of Town of Franklin, is hereby amended by the following additions and or deletions, at subsection 185, Attachment 8, Use Regulation Schedule Part 7, Accessory Uses, under the attachment 185, 185, Attachment 8, all the way down at the bottom. I'm sorry?
821.
821. 821, accessory dwelling unit residential unit changes. The changes, as you can see, are across the board, all the way from BA, which I believe stands for used, is authorized under special permit according to the Board of Appeals, all the way up to commercial 2, and then on, what's DC? That's a good question. I'm sorry, up to DC. And then business, all the way up to industrial, L1O, and MBI, mixed business is not part of that accessory dwelling unit. That's all the changes on that. Other than that, the foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Charter and the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 23-895R.
Second.
As further revised.
As further revised.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion, Jamie?
Through, Mr. Chairman. So this is the one that had debate between the steering committee, the council, the planning board, and back to the council. The last vote and the first reading was 7 to 2 majority. The issue here is on the use table, the accessory use table. The current proposal before everybody is that accessory dwelling residential units in all of the residential districts, including C1 and C2, will require Board of Appeals approval. And then obviously, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but just for the public to know, these have always been a no as a use in the commercial districts, business, office, mixed business innovation, you know, industrial, et cetera, obviously, because there's no residents, very few residents there. So happy to answer any questions. And Brian, who's also worked on this bylaw quite a bit, is in attendance tonight to answer any questions from folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Councilor Hamblin.
I didn't even say anything this time. I was like going, let's just, let's just do it. We did, we did discuss this a lot. We had Gus Brown here to explain his side. I think we've, we've come a long way. We have more to go, but let's, I think we should just get this done.
Get it done.
Is that okay? Is that enough?
That's, that's from Councilor Hamblin. Any other questions? Councilor Frangello?
Yeah, thank you. I, the term came up today that I was hoping to elaborate on and then, and talk about why I'll be voting in favor of, of this piece of legislation. The term that came up is missing middle. So if you don't know, missing middle housing refers to all the housing forms that exist between single-family homes and large apartment complexes. And there's a whole bunch, right? So that's could be duplexes, fourplexes, triplexes. It could be town homes, cottage courts, accessory dwelling units amongst those. And what we've done is we made it really difficult to build anything in that range. And so the things that are, are only financeable are the single-family or the large apartment complexes. At some point, if we are interested, if we recognize that it's difficult to afford housing in Franklin, we're interested in combating that, then the steps that we need to take involve setting a vision for what the town could look like and then removing impediments to building middle housing types within those spaces if they match the vision that we've laid out. That is going to be our number one opportunity to increase the supply of housing types that are affordable to younger professionals, aging people in town, people that currently to find housing opportunities available to them. What this measure does is does take a step, a step toward that, right? What it does is say, if you are interested in building an accessory dwelling unit, we now have a formal process. You can come forward. It's clear, um, what it is. It is clear to the planning board, uh, what needs to be done. And I hope that we, A, get more applications forward, and B, that we get more, uh, applications, uh, approved. I do want to recognize it's a small step, and if we want to really combat that in the way that I think we do, so that people like me can continue to live in Franklin, then we're gonna need to do more, uh, in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, to thank Counselor Melanie Hamblin for all the hard work and effort she's put in as the chair of EDC and, um, and, um, she's, she talks a lot about that and everybody, but I just wanted to let her know that she's appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
The answer's no.
Any other questions?
It's not election yet.
Seeing no other comments, the vote will come on the motion to approve zoning bylaw amendment twenty-three dash eight nine five R. A majority roll call vote.
As further revised.
As further revised, uh, majority roll call vote is required. Clerk will call the roll.
Frangello.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Plegree.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Cormier Ledger.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
It's nine zero, sir.
Motion carries. Small steps, and this is a step, I believe, in the right direction, and I want to thank, again, as Counselor Jones just did, uh, the Franklin for All Committee, the, uh, Planning Board, our administrative team. People have no idea how many hours went into getting this legislation passed, and I want to thank them all for that. So, moving on, zoning bylaw amendment twenty-three dash eight nine six to amend Chapter one eighty-five, Section nineteen of the Code of the Town of Franklin to add on accessory dwelling unit setbacks. Second reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment twenty-three dash eight ninety-six. Changes to subsection one eighty-five dot nine, dash nineteen, accessory buildings and structures, accessory dwelling unit setbacks. A zoning bylaw to amend the Chapter one eighty-five, Section nineteen of the Code of Town of Franklin, being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, the Chapter one eighty-five of the Code of Town of Franklin hereby amended at section, uh, subsection one eighty-five dash nineteen, accessory buildings and structures by adding the following text. This is, this is one eighty-five dash nineteen B six. Accessory dwelling units within a detached building shall be located no closer to the rear or side lot lines that then stated in subsection one eighty-five dash nineteen B one through five above, or as stated in subsection one eighty-five, Attachment nine, at schedule of lot, area, frontage, yard, and height requirements, whichever is greater. The foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Rule Charter and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five.
Move zoning bylaw amendment twenty-three dash eight ninety-six.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Jamie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I jumped the gun a little on the claps. I forgot about the last vote. But I was so excited that everybody voted yes. It took six months, but really, congratulations to Counselor Frangello, Counselor Sheridan, and everybody for, at the final goal line, everybody got on board with that, and that was really awesome. So, I had to clap. It just came out. But there's one more bylaw. Everybody already voted yes on this through numerous hearings. It's silly with the set, uh, the setback requirements.
Should we clap again?
I'd love to.
Absolutely.
It deserves it after the amount of hours put into this, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman, of how many hours have gone into all of this from everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Hamblin?
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna say anything this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, um, this is the third one, so we need to do all three, and then we'll clap.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move bylaw amendment twenty-three dash eight nine six. Again, a majority roll call votes required. Clerk will call the roll.
Cormier Ledger.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Chandler.
Yes.
Frangello.
Yes.
Plegree.
Yes.
Hamblin.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Nine zero, sir.
Great job by all. Thank you. Uh, moving on, resolution twenty-three dash forty-five. Authorization for intermunicipal agreement with County of Norfolk for County of Norfolk to provide sealer of weights and measures services to Town of Franklin. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is resolution twenty-three dash forty-five. Authorization for intermunicipal agreement with County of Norfolk for County of Norfolk to provide sealer of weights and measures services to Franklin. Whereas Franklin is in the need, uh, of a person to provide sealer of weights and measure services, and whereas the County of Norfolk here and after, known as the county, intends to employ a person as a sealer in weights and measures, and is willing to make said person available to Franklin to provide services in consideration of Franklin's payment of compensation to county, and whereas the proposed arrangement, which would be the subject of written intermunicipal agreement between Franklin and county, a draft copy of which is attached here too, as Exhibit one would benefit both governmental entities, and whereas an intermunicipal agreement is governed by provisions of General Law, Chapter forty, Section four A, which requires that each governmental entity authorizes the agreement. Now, therefore be resolved that the Town Council of Town of Franklin hereby authorizes the town administrator pursuant to General Law, Chapter, Chapter forty, Section four A, to negotiate and execute an intermunicipal agreement with the County of Norfolk in substantially the form attached here too, as Exhibit one, which agreement will provide for county to provide sealer of weights and measure services to the Town of Franklin and to receive compensation therefore, provided that said agreement may contain provisions for its extension, uh, and such other terms and conditions the town administrator determines to be in the town's best interest. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution twenty-three dash forty-five.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Chairman, I think everybody's aware from the building commissioner that the sealers of weights and measures kind of deal kind of changed with the state for towns over twenty thousand. Um, we did work on, uh, a regional agreement, um, and I'm pleased to put before you, uh, legislation is just to authorize me to enter into the agreement like tradition. Uh, but as you can see from the memo, um, uh, we're in a, essentially, a regional service agreement with the county, uh, which also involves the towns of Needham, Canton, uh, as well as Rentham. I do expect additional communities, as this becomes a success, to probably opt in in future years, which will lower the cost, but, um, there's your original four right there. Um, and I know the building commissioner wasn't able to attend tonight, um, but as we all know, he's a busy guy, and he one hundred percent endorses this and is very excited. He also does know, uh, I think his name is Al, I might have got that wrong, but the guy they already hired, uh, the Bill, Gus does know very well and supports the appointment from the county. So, um, this is a full suite of services. They do everything, including the cannabis facilities and some of the modern day, uh, weights and measures that have to be done. Um, the last note I'd make, Mr. Chairman, is, um, our fee schedule is, is pretty good relatively speaking right now. Um, the county is helping us, those four communities, um, try to get to a commensurate level of fees. They might differ a little bit beyond the communities, but we're really working with Needham. Obviously, it's a very easy comparable between the two communities. Um, so, we probably will come back later in the year, um, for a review of the fee schedule for sealers and weights and measures. The bylaw needs a little bit of cleanup, um, on our end, um, and so, once the county has done that for us, uh, we'll bring that before the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Cormier Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Jamie, just remind us, how much did we budget for that position in the FY twenty-four?
Uh, it was about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand.
And how much will this shared, like, our portion of the, I know it's a four-town shared, but how much will it cost us to be part of this agreement?
The initial setup is twenty-five thousand.
So, it's actually budget savings?
It's actually a budget savings.
That's fantastic.
So far, so good.
Okay.
It, it is, and, uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, to that point, uh, the capital committee remembers that they did, uh, offer some, um, some equipment money to, uh, to that. Um, so, we still have to work out the details of where the equipment goes, how the town gets reimbursed for that, if it does, um, and some, some of those mechanicals still have to be worked out, but, um, structurally, this should be a savings for the community of about ten thousand dollars in budget.
So, I did, just for clarification, are, are, when we vote on this, are we voting to give you authorization up to your budget number, or are we voting on no number at all and just to give you sort of the authority to negotiate?
Uh, the latter. It's the authority for me to enter into the agreement with the county. It hasn't, the vote tonight has nothing to do on financing at all. That money is already in the town budget. You've already voted for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-five. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-three dash forty-six, acceptance of and authorization for town administrator to execute conservation restriction on two open space parcels at Brookview condominium located off Pond Street. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is resolution twenty-three dash forty-six. Acceptance and authorization of town administrator to execute conservation restrictions on two open space parcels.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion is second to waive the reading. All those in favor of waiving the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Move resolution twenty-three dash forty-six.
Second.
Motion and a second. Jamie, short termary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This is the, the small pieces of open space at the end that are adjacent to the brook.
Oh, okay.
For those of you who know the old Pond Street sewer beds.
Right.
Uh, the council sold the land eight years ago, seven years ago. They're now condos at the end near the river. Um, there's some open space that was part of the planning board decision. Um, and through the town attorney, we've been able to finally get, uh, all the documents. The Ts crossed, the Is dotted, um, and now this is the formal acceptance for town land.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Frangello?
I would just say, I've walked the land. It's, it's a nice little, uh, walk, and it, they do a good job, even though you're entering a condo, um, neighborhood, they do a good job laying out, here's the parking for, uh, the, the trailhead.
Very nice.
And then they have, you know, actually decent signage for, as far as our, our small trails go.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Delarco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, Jamie, when we, when this all was going back years ago, I think, were we gonna, like, put a boat ramp and stuff down there? Were we gonna make, like, a little park down there?
It was a canoe launch. It could be probably whitewater rafting after the last two months, but like, you know, um, but it was a small little canoe launch.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. Pretty, pretty tight to navigate, but, you know, for the adventurer, maybe Counselor Frangello, you know, for the adventurer, it was my old days. I'd go down there and plop in, but, you know, I, you know, it could work.
It would be tough to have.
It was ambitious.
It'd be tough to have a drive-up boat ramp.
Right.
Uh, so, yeah, you'd have to already be, want to be an adventurer that's gonna do a little hike with a kayak. Through it, through it pretty tight.
It's tight. Okay, just wondering.
The water's nice.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-six. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-three dash fifty, forty-seven, gift acceptance, Veteran Services Department, six hundred, Fire Department, three hundred. Clerk will read the bylaw, I, I'm sorry, read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven, acceptance of gifts. Veteran Services Department, Fire Department, whereas the Veteran Services Department and Fire Department have received generous donations. Total amount, nine hundred dollars, be used at the discretion of each department as follows. Donation summary, Veteran Services Department, six hundred dollars for the municipal assistance fund, assistance fund. Donations to be used at the discretion of Veteran Services Department through the municipal assistance fund for support for local veterans and their families. Uh, the Fire Department, three hundred dollars donation will be used at the discretion of Fire Department towards the purchase of safety and other related equipment and to fund departmental programs. List of all donors is, is included in the seven nineteen twenty-two three Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now, therefore be resolved that the Town Council of Town of Franklin, on behalf of the Veteran Services Department and the Fire Department, gratefully accept these generous donations to be used at the discretion of each department for the purposes noted above. Resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Uh, again, just to thank you, uh, to the continued support from our groups within the town and individuals within the community who continue to support us. So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash forty-seven. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, one and all, for the, all the legislation for action we had this evening. Town administrators report?
Uh, I'm sure there's a bunch of updates that I'll forget, but really quickly, uh, seeing Lieutenant Riley reminded me earlier, um, off the line, we all give him a clap, but, um, I do want to congratulate, uh, Lieutenant Jason Riley for being our most recent graduate of the, uh, MMA's, uh, Master Suffolk Administration Program, which is a year-long class. It's half of a master's degree. Uh, Lieutenant Riley just graduated with another class of thirty folks across the Commonwealth, met, you know, staff from across the state. Um, he's our, actually, our fifth graduate, including Lieutenant Zimmerman, Deputy Chief Joe Barberi, Town Engineer Mike Maglio, and I had to save the best for last, Brutus Cana-Reggie, a ham of hams. Uh, but in all seriousness, all five of those folks, um, spent a year of their own time, um, doing those classes, um, and I think to the point we made earlier, I think many of you of why are we such a safe community, um, it has to do with a lot of these folks too, um, who spend a lot of extra time going and getting that education. So, uh, we've got a great department. Uh, I know the, uh, subcommittee reports, but just a couple of quick, uh, hits on meetings coming up. August second at seven o'clock is the Joint Budget Subcommittee meeting for all of those folks that are watching that were concerned, uh, about school finance this year. Um, this is your next meeting to come to. So, hopefully, folks will attend this. Uh, it will be hybrid, of course, uh, but August second, the Joint Budget Subcommittee meeting will meet. August sixteenth will be an EDC meeting where we'll hopefully be talking about the snow removal issue that has been on the minds of many counselors. Um, and also that night, uh, on August sixteenth on the council meeting, there'll be more goals checked off, uh, from the council that night. Just to, uh, kind of, uh, hopefully whet everybody's appetite, uh, the DPW will be here to talk about their, about the water tank, uh, master plan. They will be here that night to talk about major project updates in town, including the Beaver Street Interceptor and the Grove Street Reconstruction Project, as many others, just to give a PR to the community. And they will also be here with their pavement management plan, with the sidewalk plan, and the town parking lot asset plan. So, for you infrastructure junkies, this is your night. If you also are concerned.
We're gonna clap for ADUs. We're gonna clap for that.
And also, that night, uh, the chair has committed, um, to making sure that we reemphasize some of the slides that were talked about earlier in the budget season, uh, where we'll talk about the process and how you process and procedure for an override. In addition, I offered at the budget hearings an important conversation with the town attorney as well about campaign finance rules, ethics rules, and all the other open meeting laws, state rules relative to overrides. This is complicated stuff. I know all of you got me emailed this week about what happened in Brookline.
Right.
Uh, but this is serious, and so, I hope those of you that are out there, again, for the override junkies that are really into school finance, again, this is another meeting that people should really either come to, attend, tune into, or you can visit any of these meetings on YouTube afterwards and stream the content later. So, we don't take summers off. Uh, for the public to understand, the council, planning board, school committee, we're still working hard, right? So, here are some other meetings in August for people to look forward to, um, with some huge community projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. And again, repeating, uh, some of what will be discussed in the joint budget. And again, repeating some of what will be discussed in the Joint Budget Subcommittee, having that discussed again at the council meeting, I thought, I felt was very important, which is why I asked Jamie to make sure it was on the agenda so that everybody hears it more than once. There are some people that will come to the Joint Budget Subcommittee, that will watch the Joint Budget Subcommittee meeting, that may not come to the council meeting, and vice versa. So hitting them both times, I felt, was very important, so. Okay, Subcommittee reports. Capitol, I don't believe in that.
No, nothing, no meetings.
EDC?
No, Jamie already said when the next meeting's gonna be. He took that away from me.
He took your thing. Budget Subcommittee, he took mine, too. For the August 2nd meeting. Certainly it's one, people, if you're interested in what we're looking at for the next few years, this is, this is the meeting to begin to come to. It's just the start of it, but it's a very important meeting. So, please show up or tune in. GATRA Advisory Board, Councilor Frangello.
Yeah, so GATRA Advisory Board itself won't be meeting during the summer, but we will be meeting again in September. But we are still getting our monthly administrator updates, and that includes, there will be a, and I'm gonna get information out to everyone as soon as we have it, but they're scheduling a feedback opportunity, a sort of town hall, if you will, of operations, to receive feedback of operations. So, let's you know when that is, how to access that, and get that out to as many people as we can. I will say, an incident came up at the Senior Center, and this is one of a few in one theme. So just so you guys are all aware, there's, in particular, seniors with dementia have difficulty with the new busing system, which is essentially Uber, if you will, where, you know, you dial it, they come and pick you up and they drop you off. When it works really well, it's because there's a good bus driver who knows the community, knows the people, knows that this is someone that might not be in the exact location of pickup, will find them, get them to the bus, and make sure that they get to their destination. Where it doesn't work so well, especially when you have a new driver who might show up at the wrong place, or not, they might not come all the way there, they take off, and you leave someone stranded who forgets where they are, or who doesn't, who just drops them off on the nearest corner and they forget where they're going. This has come up a few times. We had a senior dropped off and that was found by a police officer. This is all the set. It is being addressed. GATRA was very responsive, and we're setting up a series of meetings between the Senior Center and GATRA to improve particularly how we deal with seniors with dementia through operations. So I'll keep you guys posted as solutions come forward.
Thank you, Councilor Frangello. Just a quick question. Are you finding the communication with GATRA easier in recent?
Yeah, I-
Because I know prior, prior people that have sat in this position.
Yes.
Councilor Plegory, was not so easy under the former administration.
Yeah, I have, I've never had to wait more than a day for a thorough response from the administrators team. And I think the Senior Center, for their operation frustrations, would say the same in terms of response.
Great, thank you. Councilor Delarco.
Do you know how their contract negotiations are going? Did they sign a contract? Because I know it's coming up.
I could get that, I can get that in-
I'm just kinda curious. I don't know, I haven't heard anything, so I was just kinda curious how they-
Maybe shoot an email to Jamie, and Jamie can send it out to everybody.
Yeah.
I don't know how it is, they could've settled, I don't know, so.
Yeah, well, I also, we don't employ the drivers directly, we employ a third party who hires director drivers.
And I know they're on the brink, so I was just-
Yeah, I believe it.
Yeah.
I'll let you know.
Thank you, Councilor Frangello. Master Plan Committee, Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We last met on June 28th. Our next official meeting, since it's the summer, we're only meeting once a month. We'll be meeting next Wednesday, July 26th to 6:30. Things are moving along well. Really gonna start picking up some steam.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Davis Thayer Reuse Advisory Committee, Councilor Plegory.
Yes, we had our first meeting last night. Went very well. We have some new people on the committee, which are very, very good, very interested in participating. And we, Jamie had invited Castle Booze, is that how you say it?
Castle Booze.
Yeah. Mike DeAngelo, and there were, I'd say probably six or seven residents that were there that gave their opinions on what they thought would be a good, good thing for the Davis Thayer School. So, I had suggested at the beginning of the meeting for everyone to just have an open mind. And said myself that, you know, I came, wanting to be on the committee because I wanted to see affordable housing and veterans, and I said, I have now changed my opinion to be set and go. I wanted to listen to what everyone has to say, and everybody be open-minded, and we really didn't ask for everybody to give their ideas yet, because it was just the first. So we got our booklets, tons of reading to do, and it was interesting when we spoke to the gentleman from Castle Booze to tell us almost what could be done, what couldn't be done, what would need to be done, if we were gonna gut it all, or put an elevator in, and, oh, I mean, it was just overwhelming to hear all of this, it really was. If you get a chance to watch it on Franklin TV, it would be good, it would be good to do. So our next meeting is going to be in August, I believe it's gonna be the 15th, Jamie?
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah, the 15th. Busy time right then and there, you know, with all of that.
We don't sleep.
But we have until the end of the year, and I'm sure we're going to be getting our assessments all set, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Plegory. Okay, moving on, future agenda items. Councilor Hamblin.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilor Frangello.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Sheridan.
Could we get an update about the self-meeting house?
Sure, sure, we can get an update on that. Anything else, Councilor? Councilor Plegory.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Chandler.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Cormier-Ledger.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Jones.
No, sir.
Councilor Delarco. Councilor comments. Councilor Frangello.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let everyone know that because of the great work that the Franklin Farmers' Market Manager Lauren Cluse has done, the SNAP program now, they have a match, now it's doubled, so twenty-dollar match now for the program at the Franklin Farmers' Market. So thank you, Lauren, for all your hard work. Also, there is, I think there's a concert on the Common this Friday, along with the Farmers' Market. Tomorrow is Council, I think that's our office hours at the Senior Centers tomorrow. So if anybody wants to come and talk to Jeffrey Roy again for another hour, they could come and like, we have more questions for him. And we will see you all in, well, I'll see you guys in July, but in, next week. But anyways, we will see you all in August, I guess, right? For a lot.
For a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Hamblin. Councilor Sheridan.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Chandler.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Two things I, we're gonna say, although I didn't say tonight, but repetition is the mother of all learning, so I'll say it again. August 1st, your election papers, please be first in line. And again, please come to the Budget Subcommittee, because I couldn't have said it better than you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chandler. Councilor Plegory.
Nothing at this time.
Councilor Cormier-Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanna first thank our legislative delegation for coming out tonight. I thought they did a fantastic presentation, and thank you to everybody for such, such great work on the agenda. I don't think I'm the only person in town that is a little bit alarmed at the growing number of panhandlers that are coming, particularly in Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, and I'm not concerned that they're asking people for money. I'm concerned at the situation that they're in, and I'm concerned that maybe they're not getting the services that they need, and I'm particularly concerned that they're standing at a busy intersections with babies. So I don't know, Jamie, if you could ask the, you know, the folks that help with social services at the Senior Center, or maybe our police officers, or, and I, it's just, it's getting to a point that they're stepping out into traffic at Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, the woman is there almost every day, she has a baby in a carriage with a umbrella over the baby in this heat, and I think we can do better. And I would like, you know, to be able to get them the help that they need, so. I'm not sure if I will see you tomorrow for office hours, because it is my birthday, but maybe, I celebrated my birthday with you last year here at a town council meeting, so maybe I have nothing better to do, I'm not sure. And on a personal note, I will ask for everyone to at least keep me in your thoughts and prayers, because I am taking a road trip to Canada with my parents, which is not easy to take eighty-year-old folks in a car for eight hours to try to retrace my dad's roots in New Brunswick.
Oh, cool.
So you all nod and say, oh, how nice. And meanwhile, I have to be the one in the car with them, so. More to come on that. We could, could very easily have an international incident on our hands, because we're going to Canada, but we're trying to stay positive.
You'll get through it, you'll get through it.
We will sure try, Bobby, and I-
We'll look forward for a recap.
I told, I've already like clued my dad in that if it is the final trip, that we will find a nice spot for him up there with some nice flowers, and it's all good, so. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Ledger. Councilor Jones.
Ted, that sounds like-
Follow that.
Ted, that sounds like a great birthday present.
I know, I was gonna say, happy birthday.
I'll happily give you my ticket.
Yeah, just a couple, couple of quick things, Mr. Chairman, I know it's getting late. I did wanna bring up the fact that, you know, in the process of people learning more and more about how things work, being an educator, I think Patrick can agree with me on this, that education is key. Learn as much as you can. I wanna give a shout-out to Steve Sherlock from Franklin Matters, who has a absolute plethora of information that is archived at Franklin Matters, that you can go back and find a ridiculous amount of useful information in regards to just, you name it. Because I went all the way back to 2008, 2009 on many of the archived information, just trying to look some information up, and I found this wonderful list of debt exclusions and overrides, et cetera, and it's all detailed, there's so much information here. Franklin Matters is a great resource for that. Steve Sherlock, thank you for all the hard work that you put in. I know it's all volunteer. The other thing, of course, I wanna bring it up again, I mentioned it earlier, is congratulations to Franklin for being ranked number two, the safest in the country. And, one more thing, I haven't mentioned it yet, this is something that, to me, is a big deal, because it makes me so proud of my cadets. As many of you know, I belong to the U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Corps Massachusetts Bay Division, and I just got word last week from my commanding officer and from the regional director that the Massachusetts Bay Division of the U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Corps has been ranked number one in the nation out of three hundred and ninety-six units. And that's, that is, that is a true testament to the cadets, because it really and truly is the cadets that make this program work. They're such wonderful kids, and our hope with the program is to continue to, to continue to build their leadership skills, provide them the extensive amount of training that we provide, and make them into great future leaders. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Councilor Delarco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a shot. Couple things. I'd like to give my condolences to the Van Voort family. Brett was one of my football players. He was only twenty-seven years old, and he was in his last year of medical school. Not sure what happened, but he did pass away a couple weeks ago. And he lost his father two years ago in a tragic car accident, so that family's had some really bad luck the last couple of years. He's a great kid. I told him, was so proud of him when he was going to medical school and his father's funeral, but I'm not sure what happened, nothing's come out yet. I just talked to Debbie, that was it. But that's a very sad, sad thing at twenty-seven years old and your last year of medical school. You know, so. And the other thing, Jamie, can you have Mike, the engineer, call me? I was up at Charles Drive Sunday, and I got pictures of these poor people, six Charles Drive and eight Charles Drive, their flip-flops are floating down, down, down the road, and Walsh Construction came out and did admit that they made the road too high. So we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do something. You know what I mean? I mean, Pat, Pat next door, her husband works for, for the Town of Franklin for thirty years, and she gets it just as bad. They're gonna put a new driveway in four, but I think it's something to do with elevation, they can do that over there, but they, I think Mike's talking about putting a drain in their driveway, but I'm not sure, just have Mike give me a call so I can talk to him, you know? Yeah, it's, it is comical seeing this stuff fly by, but they're all, they're not, you know, they're all, they're not really mad, they just-
They just want their flip-flops back.
They just, they just wanted, they just want it fixed, and I can't blame them.
I'll have them call it.
They haven't been yelling, so. But that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Delarco. I just have a couple of very quick things. On a personal note, I'd just like to wish my wife a continued speedy recovery. She had some emergency surgery last week, and also wish my sister, who is in Italy in a hospital, she had some emergency surgery on the last couple of days of their trip to Europe, so she's still in the hospital in Italy recovering. And again, to, I'd offer my condolences to the FSBA family, who, one of the band members who has been at the school since it opened, teaching, and has traveled with the Europe group and the Disney group since its inception. Got home Monday night from the trip, the whole group got home very late. Tuesday afternoon, he passed away. So it's been a difficult week, but hopefully my wife and my sister continue to improve. And again, condolences to the FSBA family who lost a very dear and dear friend. And lastly, on a positive note, just wanna say congratulations to Joe Camagnani, Paul Kordick, July 4th celebration was-
Oh, yes.
Fantastic success, they had some weather issues, but-
They did a great job.
They did a great job, and I think everybody really enjoyed the festival this, this year. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second?
Undebatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
I wanna stay all night. And good luck, Ted.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a safe trip, Ted.
Wonderful time. Bring-